We were just talking about. So what you have here are in that first column going to the right, zero months. Those are people, individuals that held a CUP or a TRL that had zero months of actually renting. So they were doing essentially the minimum or the one night. Thirty-four total properties. The next column is one to three months where they're just renting at a handful of times. So I can tell you the statistics, the numbers that we have, the average nightly rate we get for short-term rentals in the city is $515 a night. So when you work down that column, one to three months, we have 51 properties that rent for one to three months generating an average rent annually of $35.96. That's roughly seven nights a year. So that's not somebody running it as a business. That's somebody running it, you know, just a family and friends that are coming in. The next column is they're running it on reporting four to six months and you get up to about $29,000. So that's 54 nights a year. And then the next column, seven to nine months, 84 nights a year. And finally, that last column, that's an average of about 165 nights a year that those properties. So you can see the majority of them, 185, roughly half, are running it year-round. And it's a business and it's an ongoing entity. So the number, you know, as far as active, the way I look at those last two columns, 185 and the 61. So right around 250 properties that are, that I would consider are active, short-term rentals in the city that are running this as a business. So I think that that answers, I mean, these numbers are best we can show Yoli to answer your question of which ones are paying the minimum.
Well, so that just leads me to believe, I mean, because we've had the moratorium for almost a year now. Has anybody seen anybody like turn in their permit and say, okay, I can't hold off, I need to rent the unit?
Um.
Because I'm not able to get a permit. You know what I'm saying?
Well, what we've had, I mean, the people that were active, those that were active were still, the moratorium didn't stop anybody in their tracks. So those that had a permit, a CUP or a TRL, were still allowed to rent. What has happened in the last, it's almost two years, okay? It'll be two years in July since we had the moratorium. So what we have in that timeframe are 13, I believe we're at 13 pending.
Yep, we have 15 now.
15, okay. So 15 pending short-term rental applications of people that have filed since the issuance of the moratorium. This is pretty consistent if you go back 10 years. If you go back 10 years, the average approvals by the planning commission are six to eight a year of short-term rentals. In the last three years, you know, it's been that six to eight range, but we also revoked, I think, 18 two years ago when we did that revocation. So we're almost at a net zero in the last three years of the ones that have come on board and the ones we've revoked. And that's why it's important, in my opinion, to start this revocation process of the ones we know are revocable and they have their due process, you know, we have to notice them, they have the opportunity to come in and be heard by planning commission and depending on what you guys do, they have opportunity to appeal to council. So they have that ability to defend retaining it, but we feel as a city and as a staff that there's, you know, quite a few that we can go after and revoke. Many more revocations than we have waiting on the waiting list.
How many a year get turned in? Like say, somebody says that, you know, I don't want to rent short-term anymore, it's too much of a hassle and I don't, you know, want to pay the $53 anymore.
Um, I would say virtually none. What we, if you have a CUP on your property, even if you're not renting, it has some value.
Do you think that'll change if you up the fee a little bit?
Absolutely.
So somebody's like, I don't want to pay $1,000 a year to...
I mean, right now, it's $53 to maintain the CUP on your property, if you want to maintain it. And to have a CUP on a property to be able to sell it with that, it has some value.
Yeah.
A thousand dollars or something more is a much different story.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about, yeah.
But I'm just seeing, just an estimated, doing the math here, you have 373, 200 total permitted business license and permits. Then you have, with this graph here, which is very lovely, the 185 and 61 is pretty much the big-time renters here.
Correct.
And that's 250, so there's, the difference is 123s. So we have 123 permits that aren't really being used and it's just such a catch-22 because 123 units is a lot and they're not renting them, even by not utilizing what their vacation permit status. Does that make sense?
It does, but there's more than that, too. I mean, I would tell you that there's more, there's more than those 123 or so that have them, that these are the ones that have actually pulled a business license. And as I said, there's others, there's another grouping that have not complied and even pulled a business license over and above this 373 that have the ability currently either a CUP or grandfather status right now. There's already that group.
I understand that. My, I guess my whole point is we're back here to maybe talk about a cap because I believe that is what, I didn't watch the meeting because I couldn't see it on Channel 3, but that's, the kind of consensus was on the council talking about a cap and, but when you're looking at these graphs and looking at what you're telling us as well, it just doesn't seem like people are using a lot of their homes as vacation rentals and I don't believe that they're going to rent them year-round. Look at the amount that is not even being used and they're not renting them year-round. I mean, it's here, it's in black and white. So I, it went to the license, like we worked really hard and the council agreed. We never touched the saturation because nobody kind of wanted to touch that for some reason when we talked about it at council. We have a new council now and I don't think the saturation went back to this council. But I feel like, I know right now that there's a couple of units that shouldn't have a permit because it had sold twice and they're still being operated as vacation permits. And to me, we put some more stuff on the books and if we can't enforce it and won't enforce it, it's again garbage. And we're sitting here trying to come up with solutions because we don't have housings, this is a fact. But if we change that and now people are going underground and now we're not getting the money and they're still renting their units. And I'm a big advocate of, and I've said it from day one, we're handing out these permits, we're handing out these licenses and I don't, I think they need to be under a established vacation company to manage and operate. That right there will help mitigate some of the issues that we're having as noise and all that because somebody is going to be there 24 hours. But what I'm saying is, I'm not sure, like, the cap is going to be the, solving the problem. I think we have problems of a lot of people just aren't going to rent year-round and it looks like it, even if we do put a cap or, you know, we do stop.
And that's why I wanted to make it clear, and at the beginning I said it, I do not think one equals the other. It just doesn't. We have not found in this moratorium, we have not found increase of people. Sean, is your point is coming in and saying, listen, I want to rent, I've decided I want to rent this long-term, I don't know how long the moratorium is going to last, do I have to make some money? We're not seeing that. People that are buying houses or buying properties with the intent of full-time, short-term renting it, that's what they're going to do. And it's very difficult to legislate and compel somebody to rent their property the way we think they should rent it, whether it's to a long-term or how they're going to do it.
Especially if it's been a million dollars, you know, it's like...
There's far more houses that sit vacant that don't get short-term or long-term rented here than anything, you know? And you see those sit vacant year, month after month and somebody comes for a weekend or a week and that's it. You can't compel them to rent it long-term. So we have to create housing here. That's the bottom line. We have to build it, we have to create it and that's our goal. That's a large goal for us and we think it's achievable. But I think the biggest problem we have here, again, is what you mentioned, which is enforcing the regulations to make sure that the short-term renters, the vacation renters are complying and acting, behaving in a manner that we want and we want to have next to us.
Before we go, let's go ahead and finish the staff report and then I was thinking, if you guys agree, we'll let the audience speak first and then we'll go into general.
Yeah, so just real quick, I just want to say, you know, that what we'd be looking for you from planning commission, it doesn't have to be tonight, we're going to have more of these meetings, I'm certainly open to that, is any input you would have on how we can strengthen those regulations? And we have to strengthen them with the goal that we're going to enforce it. I agree with that. We are looking to add additional code enforcement and this all goes to additional costs to the city. And if we're doing this, this is another reason why we need additional funds by, through the short-term rental program and the annual fees in order to cover that. We're looking to expand our host compliance system. Host compliance is what monitors these things. They have an add-on that we can pay for that would have a 24/7 live operator that takes calls for complaints. If we tie that to an on-island manager that has to respond to complaints, it gives us a real mechanism to define if the property owner or property manager is responding to the issues as they come up. Right now, it's very difficult. These things happen on a Friday or Saturday night. We come in Monday morning to the office and there's messages on the machine from the weekend.
They're already checked out.
They've already checked out, that we've lost that opportunity. So there's ways to do that, but it costs money and we're willing to do that to make sure the enforcement is legitimate. So we're looking, you know, for planning commission's input on that. We'd also be interested in planning commission's input on what's the process? You know, if we have these regulations, one strike and you're out, three strikes you're out, how, you know, what is the thought on...
That was my next thing, I was like, I think we need to have something like that where it's a $500 fine the first time, $1,000.
Yep.
You have to reapply again.
We can have that escalating process, we can have a hard line, three strikes and you're out, we can have different levels to that, so...
Because then people will be more picky who they choose to rent out there than are going to take the money, like, oh, I don't really want to rent to a 21-year-old kid that says there's two people and eight people show up, like, ah, am I going to take the money?
Right. And what we're finding is, you know, there's no absolutes, but what we're finding are places like, you know, CIVR, Hamilton Cove Vacation Rentals that are here, they're on the island, they're doing this, do a very, very good job of not only monitoring their clients and their properties, but also responding to complaints. But while that's the majority of the properties, there's still some that don't use that.
Oh, individuals, yeah.
They don't have an on-island representative or they list the cleaning personnel as an on-island representative and they, you know, aren't responsive. So we really have to do a better job of making sure the on-island manager is on-island and we're also going to require them to pull a business license as a manager so we can monitor them and know who they are and have their contact information. So I'll shut up at this point and, you know, however you want to handle it, but again, we're just looking for more input.
I'm just curious, do we have anything in place for these homes that are being short-term rental under the table? I mean, is there any, I mean, is there anything the city can do?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not talking about like you got family in for the weekend, I'm talking about where they're renting to Joe Blow and they're just renting willy-nilly.
Right. Our host compliance, which I referred to as a company that we have contracted with that runs searches of all properties in the City of Avalon, all properties that might be advertising to rent. So if they're not registered with us, they pop up, we get those lists, we get those notifications and we pursue those. While we know there's some out there, it's not widespread. We're very confident that it's not widespread.
In these numbers, does this include Hamilton Cove or is that a separate entity?
No, this includes Hamilton Cove. So what I want to clarify is prior to even the CUP process, there was a large grouping of properties that were grandfathered in. Now, grandfathered in, we're not sure what that means other than they literally said, you've been vacation renting, you can continue to vacation rent. They weren't granted a CUP, there's nothing on file in that. They've just been allowed previously existing non-conforming use now to continue to rent short-term. And many of those have been in compliance, some of those haven't. So we also have to clean up those grandfathered ones.
And then, so say we have 373, so if you were to charge $1,000, that'd be $373,000 a year collected. Is there any way we can possibly look to incentivize homeowners to do long-term rentals to locals and stuff? Where we do a rebate, either, you know, a lower tax rate or, I don't know how we do it, but maybe take some of that money, because I don't think you're going to get enough money to buy a house over here or buy a property. So maybe take that money and...
Well, not in year one.
You know, but incentivize, even if it's a little bit, like say, hey, we're willing to, you know, give you something.
No, so our proposal would be that if you have a CUP and you're, you have a long-term renter in there, that means you're renting less than 20 times a year, right? So your fee, your annual fee could be 250, we would waive that fee if you file. If you have a long-term tenant in there, we would waive it.
So like I say, they have an incentive to, even though it's not a lot of money to somebody, but...
No, our proposal was we would waive the fee. I mean, we certainly want to encourage the long-term.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Do we know how many in Hamilton Cove specifically?
Somewhere, yes. I mean, I know, I know Hamilton Cove, it's the major, I mean, the vast majority, I want to say 74 to 78% of them in Hamilton Cove have either CUPs or TRLs of the number of units.
I can answer to just the year-round rental.
Actually, this is the perfect segue. Let's go ahead and everybody, you know, keep it relatively short, but three minutes each unless...
For year-round in Hamilton Cove, there's 18 units that are occupied 365 days a year out of 180. The rest either have permits or are just closed to everyone.
Anything else you want to say?
Yes, if it's open to discussion. Very briefly, I do agree that probably some caps are needed. I don't know that the fees are going to open a budget for housing, which is what it's intended part of this discussion. I think that we do also have enough data to prove that vacation rentals don't generate more waste than trash because they only rent for about 150 to 170 nights a year. Better enforcement, I agree, needs to be done. And, I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for this. And also, I do have a big problem with capping all rentals when it will come down to business licenses, right? We changed everything in 2020. If someone passes on their property to their son and the son then decides to put it into an LLC, they no longer can rent. So how are we addressing those things? A property that's been rented, you know, for the past 20 years, has a return clientele, they have no problems, never have anything reported as being rowdy, having rowdy groups, but again, it's staying in the same family group, but because of the transfers, they are considered transfers on the permit itself, so you can no longer rent, right? And if there's a cap that will pass through, what's going to happen with those units that were otherwise, you know, successful and that, you know, secured jobs? Our housekeepers are independent contractors, they don't work directly for us. Many of them own their own homes and we work with nine housekeeping groups. We work with a huge group of vendors that gets to make a living strictly because of vacation rentals. So I'm just curious of how we're going to address the changes that we've done five years ago and how will those be affected? Because I'm already seeing properties, you know, selling or, like I said, just going into a trust. The grandmother died once put in a trust and that's, all of a sudden, you cannot rent it anymore. So those are real concerns I have. And also, I know that it was brought up that the police department sometimes, you know, has more resources have to be spent on vacation rentals. I think would be good for everyone's sake to understand those numbers if we could pull up some reports to where we see how many times the police, the police department is, you know, deployed to a vacation rental versus to a domestic dispute or a bar fight. I think it would be interesting just for all of us to, I'm not saying the vacation rentals are not, cannot be rowdy, but they also go home versus your neighbor who has a barking dog that's there, you know, from 5:00 AM to midnight every day, 365 a year. Those are just some things that I bring up and the reason why I'm in the room, it's because I'm open for all of us to have a discussion, the people that don't like them, the people that like them and find some common ground. I would have liked to see the group that started this in Hamilton Cove be present so we can come to a conclusion together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello and thank you for holding this and appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's Tyler Ramison and I'm, like to consider myself a 51-year resident of Catalina Island. I've been coming here since I've been in diapers. And I've, now I have five children, I bring them to the island. The island is a special place to me. And growing up on the island, we would go to the same vacation rental every year. And I have all my summer memories here. I think vacation rentals are what make Catalina a special place for so many people in California because they have those same experiences of coming here with their family, growing up here, it's a safe city, there's, you're close to the water, there's just, I mean, I don't have to tell all of you how, what a great place Avalon and Catalina is. As I wanted to pass that on to my kids, I've become more involved in Catalina vacation rentals. I have 10 long-term rentals providing housing to residents of Catalina and I have a couple vacation rentals. And I have what I think is a unique idea tonight that I think I would like you to consider because I think it addresses the, what we're trying to accomplish here, which is provide more revenue from the transient rental licenses and provide more housing. And I think the problem itself is the licenses and the CUPs are valuable. So if you have a home, as David points out, it, you want to hang on to that. So you're renting it out for one night and you're, you're going to do whatever you can to hang on to that transient rental license because it's valuable, maybe not to you right now as renting, but at some point, you're going to sell the house, you're going to pass it to your kids, you don't want to lose that value. And I think that's the problem in that people are holding on to it but not utilizing it and not generating revenue for the city. And how do we address that? And I think the best way to address that is to separate the license from the property and allow people who own a CUP to sell that license. So that's going to, would accomplish a few things. So you're no longer going to have these people hoarding it, renting it out for one night. They're going to say, okay, I don't have to do that anymore. I can sell this license to someone who wants to do a vacation rental, someone who wants to run it and pay the city $11,000 a year rather than a token $400. And if you separate them and you create a market, they have a value. And people like myself, other people who see the value in providing this service to visitors will buy those licenses and utilize them more intensely. And the other part of that, so once you separate the license from the property, the owner of the property then says, okay, well, I no longer have this CUP, they're more likely to rent that out to a long-term resident because they're not at risk of not being able to do it for two years. I think a lot of people don't understand all the rules and regulations. They're saying, I'm keeping this as a vacation rental and I don't want to risk that by renting it to someone. And once you separate it and get it to those people who will use it by creating a market where people can buy and sell the license and move it to those properties, so there's a big disparity between these prop, some of the properties, some of the properties are functionally not a great vacation rental. And there's other properties that don't have a license that are great vacation rentals that would generate tremendous amount of money for the city. More than, I pay far more than $11,000 a year to the city for my vacation rental. And there's other properties that don't have a vacation license that could take it from one who's paying $400 and would use it. The other benefit of this is if you, once you have this market, you create a value for these licenses. And I built the place on the corner of Catalina and Beacon. And there I built a vacation home and I built two long-term rentals. And I'll tell, I'll tell you, it's financially unviable to create long-term housing here. It's extremely expensive to build here, it's time-consuming and it doesn't make sense. If you pair it with vacation rental, it can make sense. And once you create that value, then what I propose is that the city says, okay, we're going to put a cap, whatever it is, 400. If you want a new license, create a housing unit for us. And create a two-bedroom apartment, a house, one long-term rental and we'll give you one vacation license. And then that's the hard cap. And that vacation license, they don't have to use on that property, they can sell it in the market. So someone else wants a vacation rental license for their property, they, the developer can sell that license to that person. And that would create a value to creating new housing in Avalon where it would reduce the cost for the builder because he's able to sell the permit to somebody who wants it. So that would be my solution that I think that you should really consider is separating that permit from the property and creating a market and allowing developers and entrepreneurs to come in and build the housing that you need because it can happen because those permits do have value. That's my first issue. Some, addressing some of the other issues, I think, you know, as a vacation destination, Avalon competes with the rest of the world. If we want to make this a fun, nice, family vacation, we should reduce the frictions of coming here. And I think that if we have 400 vacation rentals, all trying to check in on Catalina Street with 10 people so that they can count 10 people, we can count 4,000 people on Friday when everybody comes in, to me, it's not feasible. Additionally, no one cares about my properties and my vacation licenses more than me. I don't want to outsource that to anyone else. I want to vet the people who are coming and staying in my home. I want to be there and know who these people are and check them in, know who, where they're coming from, have the same people come back. And no one cares more than the property owners. I think outsourcing that is a mistake and separates the incentives. You know, I want to keep my license, I want to keep my house nice, I don't want people throwing up in my house. And I care about that more than some management company. So those are my two issues. I think, you know, I think they're good solutions, I hope you'll consider them. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, Mary.
Mary Schickling, 139 Whitley. That was actually an interesting idea about buying and selling the licenses. My, I just want to let the planning commission know that my ideas is, I agree that people that buy homes here for vacation rentals or whatever, I mean, they're seriously not going to buy them for long-term rentals. It just does not pencil out. But the way I see it, I've lived here for 30 years and the way I see it, just in the last like five, six years or something like that, people glommed onto the idea of a business. And they're, like Dave said, they're, they're buying them strictly for a business and rent them out full-time, you know, make a ton of money, it's a cash machine, there you go. The problem I see with that, and everybody says that the license holds value, increases the value of the house and all of that kind of stuff, so it just continues to go up and up and up. And I think that if we made it more difficult, made it more stringent, cut down the number through attrition, that eventually prices will come down and then people like me will finally be able to own a house. I think that's part of the problem with the housing shortage on the island. We all work our butts off here and I'm sure that people have been saving some money and if you could find something, you know, affordable, and these days by affordable, it's like in the 6, $700,000 range. 6, 700,000 range, that would be great. But we don't have that anymore. So that's where I I think the imbalance is. I think we need to and and I don't want to, you know, mess up anybody with their property values and all that stuff. And like I say, it's going to happen. It should happen gradually over time. But I just think that if we we have to remember that this is a community, and people live here, and would like to live here and pass on homes to their children. And I think we need to look at that aspect. Try and make try and make it more community, more affordable for us to be able to stay here and buy our own places and like that. Thank you.
Hi, Mary. I
What?
Wholeheartedly agree with you. And I think that's why we came up with the license thing, because then it drops off.
Right.
And then you have to reapply. However, a couple of that a couple of those licenses that are dropping off are are still using. So my whole thing is enforcement, just, you know, and then I think it will take time. But I think eventually, by cleaning everything up that we're hoping to be doing, and then making stronger conditions
Mm-hmm.
And doing the maybe one, two, three strikes, you're out, or something like that, it will move faster.
Right.
And I'm hoping that we'll get off out of the it'll take a while, but of the CUPs and going to licenses.
Right.
Because that was the whole point was the value.
Let more people in there.
Yeah.
But also, instead of maybe a cap on the number of licenses or whatever, we put a cap on how many properties one person can own, or an LLC or whatever like that, you know, tighten that up. So somebody that has, you know, just bottomless pockets, come in and buy like five for strictly for vacation rental year-round.
That won't stop anybody with bottomless pockets. So let's put in somebody else's name. So it's it kind of defeats the whole purpose. Yeah, let's put another LLC or corporation. And so somebody who has endless money is going to do whatever they want.
But in their application, can't you just can't we track and see, okay, this tracks back to
You put in your daughter's name, you put in your niece's name, you hire somebody to run it for you. So they're going to do whatever, you know, you're not going to stop somebody with that wants to have 100 houses here.
I suppose that's true. Well.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matthew Afulder, and I always appreciate the opportunity to speak today. From what I understand, commercial properties in Avalon are still required to have transient rental licenses. And I want to come talk to the planning commission about why. I'm a local business owner, and I know several of you on this commission have owned businesses over the years. And we understand the level of dedication, liability, insurance, and compliance that it takes to operate a business in California. Commercial property owners meet those standards every day. We're taxed at higher commercial rates, held stricter safety and accessibility codes, and subject to more oversight, because that's the responsibility of operating in a commercial business zone. And that's why I'm here to urge you to exempt commercial properties from Avalon's transient rental licenses licensing requirements, mostly because these regulations were originally created to protect residential neighborhoods, to preserve long-term housing, maintain character of our community, and I full, wholeheartedly support that mission. But let's be honest, the core problem started when residential property owners were essentially allowed to operate commercial companies. Today, we have homes functioning as businesses in residential zones without the same safety systems, inspections, or accountability as actual commercial operations. And that has real consequences. Would we allow a scuba shop or a bar to open in a residential neighborhood? Of course not. But that's kind of effectively what's happening with short-term rentals that operate out of full-time out of homes. No sprinkler systems, no ADA compliance, no commercial-grade insurance, minimal oversight. Well, at the same time, commercial property owners operating in the right zones, following every code, paying higher taxes, are being forced to follow the same residential licensing processes. And I feel like that's backwards. There's another serious impact that Mary touched upon, and by allowing residential homes to operate as businesses, you've essentially added a commercial income potential to every single residential property in town. That has driven up home values and possibly priced out local families and workers. So I want the the council, the commission, to seriously consider that value add, because there is a huge value add with those. I understand we're not going to revoke every residential rental license that's been issued. But what I'm asking the commission to do is think about this imbalance and the correct way to move forward. I would ask to please give clear direction today to exempt commercial properties from Avalon's transient rental requirements. And let's enforce where enforcement is needed, in residential zones, where these laws were were built, and let properly zoned, properly taxed, commercial properties do what they were built to do. Support Avalon's tourism community, serve visitors safely, and operate under the standards that we meet every day. And so I just wanted to be open for any questions that the commission may have.
I didn't read the patent after you did the commercial license.
That's the impression that I got from reading it. I wasn't 100% clear, but from what I understand, commercial properties are subject to the same transient rental requirements that are made of residential properties. And I just really wanted to clarify the difference between owning a residential property and owning a commercial property. And as all the business owners and workers that on the commission and in the audience know, it's a huge step up. And I believe that there is a lot of business owners that operate very well in the transient rental community. This is just my unpopular opinion that I wanted to share with the council. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. George Paquette at 360 Eucalyptus. I really wanted to first share our story, give a little bit of feedback on us. We have a couple short-term rentals. The one here on the corner on Tremont and Eucalyptus, and we built it. We initially bought this for a three-unit investment property. There was an empty shed next next door, and I think probably a lot of you guys saw it. We did a modular, we brought it over by ship and built it. And really, we looked at this as a as a home for our families that we can come over on vacation, but when we can cover the bills as well, to build this to be able to rent it out when we're not using it. You know, we got the keys the same day COVID shut everything down, and it made a, you know, made everything a little bit of a challenge, to say the least. So but I wanted to first touch on that, because, you know, we created a new short-term rental, we created this income, we hired all on-island labor, we done we've done everything right. So it's a little frustrating when I start hearing that the licenses, there's that many people operating without a license. Why are we doing it the right way? Why are we paying all these fees? What what enforcement is there? It has to be really good enforcement, or else everyone's going to take advantage of it. So that's my my first topic. And the second one I have on here is, I think this is a little bit misleading when you start to look at these numbers. You have a lot of these are only rented out a few months a year. I would guarantee that those are the prime times of the year, and these people have not invested any money into their units. And it's a unit that they're units that rent when everything else is unavailable. So my point on that is, you know, I hear people come up and say, you know, we've everybody that has short-term rental makes a ton of money and does this and does that. But it's not the case. We've never pulled a dollar from our units, ever, not $1. I'll show anybody that, you know, our numbers. We've never pulled a dollar from these units. We've always invested it back into the properties, and we made them nicer, we made them better for rentals, for long-term rentals and for short-term rentals. So just my take. I appreciate you guys listening to us and and considering all this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to quickly clarify one thing George said, that there are not, we are not aware of a lot that are operating in short-term renting without a license. All 373 do have a license that we have listed here. Yeah, there are some that don't have a license that have a CUP, but they're not renting. And that's part of the revocation group that we're going after. But they're not they're not actively renting. These are the ones that are actively renting. Yep.
Hello, folks. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. Corey Hoyt, 360 Eucalyptus. George Paquette and I are business partners. The part I wanted to speak to today, Tyler touched on it a little bit as well, and that is caring for your properties. It's one of the things that, as we started this business, it was kind of my side of it to try and build, construct, and hire. And one of the things that we did with Pete Edwards when we first started 360 Eucalyptus was Pete had told us when we went through this process with the planning commission, that you guys gave us a sheet that said, you have to use on-island labor. You have to use people here to actually do that as licensed to work here in Avalon. We hired Fine Line. Over the years, we've hired multiple companies. Everybody that we've hired and done, we've done the work here locally. During COVID, all the work that we did here employed a lot of people, a lot of workers at Fine Line. We do also, I think to your point, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. All of our homes are sprinkled. We've spent that cost. We've done it on-island. We've paid on-island people that actually do the work here for us. And I think the other important thing is speaking to managing the property itself. We have cameras on all of our properties. We have when they check in, we validate and verify the people that are coming in. We don't just do a regular form that says who's coming. We make them give us our ages, the ages of the people that are coming. We have a cap, no one lower than 25 years old that can rent our properties. Our properties are nice, because we keep them nice, so that we can drive revenue. When you come to stay at one of our properties, I think Tyler said it best, it's like, we care so much, because we want to be able to use those properties too. We don't want to show up to broken stuff and people throwing parties and things like that. Everybody that comes to one of our properties gets a list. My wife actually screens every single person that comes in. We've turned people away 4th of July, because they've actually said, hey, we're going to do this, or we're going to do that. We're like, no parties, we're not doing that. And why? Because that's not enjoyable to our neighbors. We don't want people coming, showing up with a bunch of luggage and sitting outside camping in front of a house. We refer them to Blue Line Baggage. Check your bags, go enjoy the day, and at 4 o'clock, come in and check in. We try to make things easy for people so that they can come in and check in and enjoy the island. The other thing that we do is we turn people away. We've had people show up to the island, and we see them on our cameras, and it's eight teenagers showing up. And we're like, oh, where's the mom? We call. We don't let them in. We've done this multiple times. We've had three instances where that's happened to us. We've never had a complaint. We've never had people thrown out for for being rowdy. We've made phone calls. We work with Airbnb and VRBO and the the groups that actually manage that. And this is the thing, we love our properties. We love Avalon. When people come here, we send them a list of the lobster trap, the places to go eat, the great places. We, ever since the horse thing opened up, we went and talked to them, said, hey, can we work with you guys to give discounts? We want to drive people that want to come here and go on a tour, go on a boat ride, go to the go on a horse ride, go play golf. We're trying to cater to families that will come here and spend money in the city of Avalon. That's what we love about this. I love taking care of our properties. We're out here today working on a property just to make sure that it's that it looks good, that it's clean. I'm here and, you know, I've talked to a lot of folks on the panel up here when I'm out there working. And it's it's what I enjoy about the process of of homeownership. And so what I would like for you folks to do is is consider the fact that there's groups of people out here that actually love this piece of it. We love Avalon. We love coming here for our families. This is a long-term thing for us. This isn't some short-term, you know, business play. It's something that we want to be able to hand to our kids, my daughters. They love coming here now. It's a it's a great thing. And so I appreciate your guys' time today, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I just want to say that welcome to the world of of regulation. You know, when you try to come up with these, it's not with these folks in mind. They're doing everything right, and sometimes going above even what we're proposing to regulate. It's the bad actors always create regulations which punish the good actors, unfortunately. And that's that's how we're constantly been trying to walk this line of figuring out how to regulate this, how to do this in the right way. It solves not everybody's issues, but as many as possible. So, you know, we appreciate the feedback every time we have it. I learned a couple more things that we we can add to it or try to tweak to make it better.
Yeah, I think so. And I think it's such a multi-dimensional issue in that when ideas like at this meeting are planting seeds that you might not see come to reality for a while, but they do. I mean, where we are now is so far ahead of where we were, you know, 15 years ago, five years ago. And a lot of it comes up in these kind of discussions, and then they start to get legs and start to move. Just changing it from, you know, which has caused some problems, from a land issue to a business license, instead of a land use entitlement to a business license, solved one problem. It's created some others. But it seems to be holding. And because it's such a multifaceted issue, I think, even if what you really realize would make it a little better, and even more people might, it's still going to take a little bit of time to kind of work through and settle into people's heads. But how about some discussion here? Anybody else want to come up before we, oh, and then we'll start talking at this end, too?
Hello. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. My name is Tim Kenby, and I have a customer who asked me to come over tonight. And I had conversation with him recently. And one thing that you talk a lot about is noise, and how do you control noise? And his daughter manages his house. And what they they installed was a decibel meter. And I don't know if you've heard of those. This is the first time I ever heard about them. But whenever it it gets too loud, it sends a signal to her. And then she calls up the occupant who is there. And I think she gives maybe one warning, and the second warning, or it's not even a warning, she just kicks them out. So I just heard about that. Maybe you all know about that already. That's just
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There's no action taken tonight, right?
How how long do you think the process of revocation will will take approximately?
Well, we we think we have this group that we've identified that we would start with the notification process to get them on your May agenda. So we would start that immediately. They'd be on your May agenda. You act on them. They would have the ability to appeal to council. You know, I mean, that that we would start immediately.
And so once we get through that process, and we get a little more concrete numbers on what's going on, we have till, I wrote it down, July?
Well, July 30 is when the moratorium expires.
Okay.
But like I said, I mean, two years down the road, quite honestly, I thought we would have 30 to 40 in a waiting list, properties that wanted to get on. We have 15. So it's far fewer than I anticipated that we would have. We would just have to start the process with those 15, once the moratorium gets lifted.
So before the moratorium expires, would we be making some more recommendations that possibly
Yes.
would go through right before it expires, and that they can vote on, and we can change and add and tweak?
That would be the goal, that we would present a package to council for approval prior to that.
And so you're talking maybe June?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, updates on specific regulations would come back to you for, I think, a a package would come back to you for a formal recommendation.
Okay.
Then we would need to schedule that for council to act upon. And I believe that that's they act on it, then we have to do a second reading.
It'd be 30 days after that, yeah.
So obviously, it is a tight time crunch. However, I think that we're kind of committed to doing as much as we can with commission and council prior to the end of the moratorium, you know, time allowing.
I've got a couple ideas based on where I think we are right now. Because what I suspect will happen is we'll get up to the moratorium, and we'll do the best we can, but then revisit this probably every two, three years, as we normally do, which I think is a healthy thing. And what I'm thinking is, if we've got, what, 14 applications right now, and it looks like we're going to have a cap of X.
Maybe at some point. I mean, I think that, you know, it'd be difficult for us to recommend a number to council right now until we complete the revocation process.
Yeah, but there's likely to Yeah, but there's likely to, if we have a cap and we have a line, one thing I wouldn't want to see is 14, 30 applications all come at once.
Right.
So what I would hope to do is, let's just say four per month that would come in, just as a practical matter, and to kind of regulate how they're coming in so the community can absorb it. And that's assuming some are disappearing if there were a cap.
Right.
But start with that. And then, which I'm also wondering if we should have kind of two different lines. One is just the regular line, but then kind of a fast pass, where if you're going to provide a house within or nearby, that that line goes first until it disappears. And then the other line would kick in. And what I'm thinking is, two issues that have come up up to this point that have been stated a lot. One is that noise and complaints, and if someone were there, that would be a real benefit. They'd get a quick call. So prioritizing in this scheme for a fast line, if it's a duplex and one of the places are rented out full-time, that you would have an automatic person there to regulate and to call and, you know, to be there. And this is some sort of ideal, it's almost like the old-school bed and breakfast, which, you know, has been around forever. And I think those have a reputation of being a good thing because they're self-regulated and they don't get rowdy with the person out there. So and then the second part of this ideal is that not only are you have a transit rental, but you've created a full-time rental. So that would be one example of who do we want to go in the fast pass or the fast line to get it if we're reviewing for a month? One thing, it clearly doesn't solve a lot of problems, you're not buying and selling, you know, it doesn't matter if it's a commercial or not, but it does show a priority. And then there might be other priorities that would come in that maybe if you had a not onsite, or, you know, somehow we could rank them. But I don't think, I mean, I do think we want to give a preference to transit rentals that are meeting city goals. If we want to continue to permit them, and it's, I'm thinking we will be permitting them, even if we have a cap, we're still going to get applications in, and if they meet the criteria, we're going to give them an approval, I hope. I mean, that's the whole point.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, those are great points. Those are, when you look at, I think San Diego, for example, they have four tiers, and the first tier being that if you, the owner is living onsite, and they, it's much less stringent to get it there. And then another full-time occupant. But that is also something that we've considered, that you move to the front of the line, so to speak, or you have that advantage if you provide a full-time rental.
Yeah, and I like that because then if it's not a real thing.
Right.
If nobody actually can do this, it's just an ideal, then it doesn't stop anything.
Right.
Kind of like something like that, you know?
And I think too, when we do have them in front of us, a lot of times, you know, if they're a duplex or a triplex, we do, you know, okay, you want this, and the other one is year-round, we do ask those questions, but it would definitely be nice to have it in the municipal code. And also, I would like to say, once we have a company that goes around and can notify if people are underground, and you'll get the list, could it be like they're on a blacklist? Like, they've been doing it for a long time, and they come up for an application, and can we say absolutely not?
Yeah, if that came up and we had already identified them previously renting, we would notify, I mean, that would be part of the process, absolutely.
Is there any, so they can still do it, is there anything we go after them for? Like, they're running a business illegally?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we
So what can we do to them, though? Like, what's the punishment?
Well, the punishment is, we're able to really kind of boil down through host compliance of how many nights they have rented, and we can make that determination of what it is and go apply tax liens to the property.
Okay, okay. Because if they're, you're going to deny them for a permit, they're just going to still keep renting and take the money in cash, and you're not going to stop bad people from doing what they want to do.
Right, right. Now, the process is, if we're not getting the TOT, it's a tax lien.
Have we done that before?
We've had that process, and we have a couple right now that we're looking at.
Just curious.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, another thing is, I would just like to mention, like, the revocation policy updating that.
Yes.
And, you know, and what was it, an annual renewal license fee, and figuring out how to be a property manager onsite or a creative substitute for that, or really just spot-on for meeting the kinds of discussions we've had up to this point. And
Yeah, we just, I mean, we really feel that we can solve so many of these problems if we're able to address the complaint quickly when it comes up.
Yeah, like I said, Friday, and you're not here till Monday, there's nothing you can do about it.
Right. It's, and I've been out there on Friday and Saturday nights. I mean, I've seen it, I've heard, I've, you know, it's, we have the sheriff here. The difficult part, when the sheriff gets the call, is a complaint doesn't necessarily generate a police report. So for us to be able to verify the complaint, relying solely on the sheriff becomes very difficult.
Yeah, I mean, isn't their whole point is to de-escalate?
They de-escalate and stop the process and move on. And if the people say, okay, and they cut the music off and they end it, that ends it for the sheriff, and they're not generating a report for us to act on.
If it's 3:00 in the morning, it doesn't matter.
Right. So that's why, you know, to be able to document when there's a problem, it makes it much easier for us. And it's not a penalty to the good actors that do a good job of vetting their guests because they're not having those problems. It is a small, and it is a small handful, but that small handful got us to this point where everybody thought, I mean, the belief was, we had so many of these, they were dominating and they were controlling the environment, and that they were just coming through the city and getting approved, you know, 50 to 100 a year, and that just wasn't the case. But because the noisy ones were out of control.
Pretty everybody.
Yeah.
I do also know that when I did a vacation rental in Arizona, that they did have cameras, like, a majority of the, and they had these rules that were posted, and you couldn't have people after a certain time, friends even that were like around, that we went for an event, and they couldn't be in the house past a certain time, and if they were, you were fined, you know, you would, they'd charge you. And, I mean, they were constantly calling all the time, you know? And it's a lot of work, but it scared us. Because at the end of the day, it was our pocketbook.
I think Hamilton Cove has that, don't they?
Well, it's the gate, so, yeah, the gate that kind of regulates.
I guess I also lean towards a cap. Part of it is based on the, kind of the urban legend, or whatever you would call it, that over the last 30-plus years, we've had the same amount of transit rentals. I mean, it really hasn't gone up or down, so in a way, it would be a formal acknowledgement of that. It might take away some of the speculative value that is increasing the pricing of housing, but still allow, over time, if there are business licenses, to go to the right places that people want to maintain them. Does make sense to me. And then if it doesn't make sense sometime in the future, then we could always modify it. But, you know, what that cap should be, I mean, who knows? And maybe it's, maybe we're not ready for it now. But we're not, I mean, our visitor count is growing in ships, not hotel rooms.
Correct.
And we have a pretty extended off-season.
I don't like a cap. I'd like, let's enforce what we have, and the bad apples will get kicked out if we enforce it, and then the market will set itself.
In a way, that is, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think you need to have a cap because I don't want to turn somebody away that might be good. Let's get rid of the bad people and let the good people like these guys over here that love the island and want to use it for their house, like, it'll, because you put a cap, then you get, then you put value on it again, like the blue stickers. Like, you put a cap, now everybody's holding on to them, and they don't want to give them up for 30 years, they don't use them. And it's like, if you
That's true. A good standard will reduce
Yes. So I think
I mean, the one lesson, Sean is 100% right. The lesson I learned from the vehicle blue sticker list, okay? And I got here and I saw that we had a 25-year waiting list. When you create a cap, you create a waiting list. When you create a waiting list, now you're creating real value, more value in these. If you think they have value right now, once the cap is instituted and once there's a waiting list, then that value
Then it's just like, I sell you 10% of my house, or I sell you 90%, I keep my name on the lease, you get my thing, I collect 100 grand a year, and, you know, like I said, you're making a fake value. Because I think you can have, I think everybody should have a car here. And like I said, the parking will solve itself. People have cars, they don't use them, but they keep their car because they don't want to lose the value of the blue sticker. I know people that never go out in the hills, never, you know, but they have a car here, they have a full-size vehicle, they never move it, and it's, they're keeping it because it has value. And so I don't like putting a hard number on it. I think you should just define it and make it harder for the bad people to keep it, and let the people that want to use it and, you know, enjoy it, have it.
The good thing is, when we have good numbers, we'll know if it's, it might actually start going down. I mean, it'll be a cap or no cap, what actually happens.
Yeah, I mean, I can almost assure you that by the time we're done with the first wave of revocations, we're going to certainly revoke more than the people that are on the waiting list. No question. I mean, that's a given. So it's going to be a lower number.
And say you have 15, I bet you 10 of them won't meet the qualifications or go all the way through with the process, or they're not ready right now, or want to come here, you know?
Maybe, I think those 15 own property
They've been waiting that long, yeah.
But still, we're going to revoke, you know, in excess of 20 to 30, I hope.
They've been abandoned, basically, haven't they?
Yeah, that's the goal.
Presumed abandoned.
Or they didn't know they even had it in the first place. Which is going to be some of them. I think you're going to hear that story in a month.
And they come back five years later and say, oh, we used to have one, and
Yeah, they just didn't know. They were grandfathered in or anything else.
Anybody else?
I think this is a very good discussion, and I think hopefully by the end of a couple months, we can put some, the pen to the paper and start moving forward.
So maybe we can do this to move forward. We know that we're going to be bringing revocations for your May meeting, so you're going to have some of those. And then I'll shoot for having a draft of some of the regulation modifications that we discussed tonight, and just, you know, maybe some changes of, here's how it could look like, you know, a fast pass type. Here's how that could look like, here's what the noise regulations could look like, those things. The three-strike policy, if that's what we want to do, and just give some options so you can look at what it would look like on paper from a regulation standpoint. And then we can start looking at how these revocations are going. I think we'll have a pretty good idea by the end of the May meeting.
Wrap it up?
Thank you.
Thank you. And
Needing adjourn?
No announcements.
All right.
All right.